Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It gives me great pleasure this evening to give an award to Lynn Birch. Lynn, would you come up here? Lynn Birch has worked for the city for 25 years. She was the cashier clerk's dental receptionist, 1987 to 1990. She was the deputy clerk confidential secretary, 1990 to 93. City clerk, 93 to 2009. And CAO, 2009 to 212. Lynn Birch. And I also want to say that Lynn and I worked together without a CAO and it worked just fine. We were in between, but you know, she's been a real strength in the city for many years. And it was a great pleasure to be able to work with her the last couple of years. Not that it wasn't before too, but the last couple of years she moved into a level where she really utilized all the skills she'd built up over the last 22 years. So again, thank you very much Lynn for a wonderful stretch of work for the city. And this won't be the last thing we congratulate you with, but this will be your last meeting today, so congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Okay, I'll call to order this regular meeting of Grand Forks City Council. And could I have a motion to recess into the primary committee? Councilor Doherty, Councilor Smith, all those in favor? And so we are going into our primary committee meeting. First item is the adoption of the agenda for the primary committee. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda this evening? Councilor Wires, Councilor Smith, all those in favor? The first item of business is the corporate officers' report on employee policies. What we're looking at here is that we recommend, the primary committee recommends to council that the employee conduct rules and regulations policy be identified as policy number 601 be adopted as attached. I just wanted to say tonight too that Lynn has been telling us all her secrets of things that she didn't tell us before. One of the things she told us is that she knows whenever we read our stuff and when we don't read it. So those of you that think you're getting away with not doing your homework, you're caught. So this is a policy number 601 and we're being asked to adopt as attached. Councilor Doherty, Councilor Smith. Discussion? How many read it? Okay, and it does, it goes into the detail of what basic expectations are for our employees in all kinds of common sense situations, but nailing down really the common basic practices that we expect and the performance that we expect. Ready for the vote? All those in favor? Posed, carried? The next item of business is general government, governance, finance policies. This is to do with the bank signing authorities. We've had a number of changes here, including the fact that we don't have a post office box anymore, but basically it reestablishes signing authorities that are number 801, policy number 801, and is in, basically in the direction of responsible, good governance on finance. A motion to adopt? Councilor Smith, Councilor Wires. Discussion? How could I forget? Discussion? All those in favor? Posed, carried? And we are down to question period from the public. Anyone in the gallery wishing to come forward with any question on this matter or other Want to finish with that under old business?
Sure.
Okay, so we were asked last council meeting for some information on a particular stop sign and we have our... What's the...
Manager of Operations.
Manager of Operations, Al Wright. You're getting my names right here. M-O-O? Yes.
Thank you, Your Worship and Councilors. I guess the question came up, why the stop signs that were there? And on advisement, typically what we do is search traffic flows through traffic engineering and then we'll bring advisements from those professionals into council and move forward. What transpired with this one was I've been receiving ever since I started complaints on that intersection from my coordinated roads and sidewalks. And also complaints from the neighborhood as well as concerns from the RSTP about the perceived drag strip that was created between the grocery store all the way down to the food park. And that we thought we would install the three-way stop there and alert people to the intersection. To this, and also the fact that the opening of the Silver Kettles with the many more feet to road that we were going to have in traffic there. It was felt prudent to go ahead with the stop sign at that time. And to date, I have received one complaint on that and they have been there for about a month and a half. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for following up on that question. Council, do you have any questions on this? Councilor Smith?
Yeah, I've had a number of complaints myself. I haven't, I should just forward them on. And I just wondered if where the gables and the chicken strips are, if that isn't a better place for a four-way stop because the road actually does go all the way through.
We're trying to drop that term now. Chicken strips. But yeah, whether or not that should go all the way through, not have a stop there?
No, the stop sign shouldn't be there instead of at the Silver Kettle Village because that's where the kids are. That's where the, because that's where people go who live in the gables up to, hadn't schooled, the path right up through there. If a four-way stop sign would be a better place at that intersection.
Councilor Worschagin, do you have any comment on the area?
I do know the area well. I suppose it's not a bad suggestion. I'm 100% sure how that would affect the Silver Kettle Village. I would suggest that if we're going to put, where there already is a stop sign, a site risk there, then we also look for maybe a stop sign further down that same road by Dick Barber Park because there still is a lot of people speeding through that area where kids play baseball, behind the curb.
So a couple of suggestions, but in the meantime, we've made that change there and I think we should monitor it for a period of time. If there are other complaints and things that come forward, then we bring it back and ask for it to be revisited. Would that be possible? Okay, let's see, Councilor Smith? Give it a shot as is, as the change has just been made three months ago?
About a month and a half ago.
Two months and a half ago. Okay, so we'll monitor that? That's okay? Thank you. All right, and back to anyone from the gallery wishing to come forward with comments
Les Johnson? I'm curious if you've gotten feedback on your new, the new, I guess not just yours, regional district's waste reclamation or that wording?
Green bin?
Green bin, yeah.
Kitchen waste?
I'm just curious what the feedback?
My personal feedback has been mixed, but the main complaint that I've heard is people complaining that they've had interference with it, putting it out the night before. And so my question to them is, why are you putting it out overnight, the night before? You didn't do that with your garbage. But mostly positive from people. I don't know whether, Councilors, have you had feedback?
Yeah, I spoke with Tim Dewitt at length about it. He said, you know, it was integral in getting us, getting the bins out and talking to people and explaining the program and that he only had about 15 people that were dead set against it. Considering 1,500 households, that's a pretty good, pretty good stat.
Yeah, we have to expect some negative feedback. Councilor Worschagin?
Thank you. I just out of curiosity, does this area, do you have that same system? Do you have it at your place?
No. This has just extended to the city boundaries that first tested with Valmar. And now this extends the rest of the city?
I was talking to Brenda LaCroix at the stewardship, Christine Lake there in that office and asking whether they have it there and she said, oh, no, no. Bears would like those things. So I'm just curious if, how the bears have been, if you have any feedback on whether any bears have been cracking these things open or...
Just the one comment that has been knocked over but not broken into, that Councilor Kendall? And then I'll ask if there's any complaints that have impacted the city staff.
I actually had two people approach me that they had issues with bears and actually destroyed the containers. Certainly got them open. So that was a concern. And I did have one constituent approach me about their perception of the, they felt they were getting less service for more money.
I understand that.
And I did give Tim Dewitt the call and had him contact that person directly and explain the entire program. I believe that that issue is the result.
All right, I'm glad he's on the job. And can I ask city staff, is there any complaints that you had to the front desk on the green bin program?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not... Mr. Mayor, thank you. We haven't had any complaints at the, at City Hall, but apparently one through operations where a bearer basically attacked the can to try to get into it, but only the one complaint made.
Thank you. And Councilor Krog was next?
Yeah, I've had a couple and it's bear related. They did get it open, but then other people have said that the locking mechanism is hard to operate. But then we kind of figured that that's because they moved. So I'm not sure if it wasn't quite locked when they got to or whatever. But they've been knocked them out big time.
I noticed the heavy plasty pails they have on side of living arts center. They have a metal ban strap and cable locks and everything else to get them better. Somebody, just one quick question. If a bear destroys your green bin, I know what the prices of the small ones are, I saw them being tired of it, but if a bear destroys your green bin, it's up to you to replace it? Is that the deal?
Good question. Can I get back to you on that?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. But the typical process would be that the, they would be covered through the program.
Through the program, great. I did one with, Councilor Smith?
I just wanted to note that whatever you were putting in a green bin, you've been putting in your other bin anyway. I heard one instance where a bear went for the green bin, was unsuccessful in opening it and tore apart the other garbage. Anyway, just ripped the heck out of it, yeah, so.
Bears behaving badly. Councilor Worschagin?
Just one last point of information. I'm not sure if you want to go there, but I don't know if it's known, but the city of Casador has a law on including people to play the garbage on the parking lot.
So it has to be the morning?
Has to be the morning after the bear's arrival.
Well, it's certainly good practice. I don't know whether we want to make more rules or not, but we'll be talking about that at the next Regional District Environment meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, having nothing coming forward, motion to adjourn? Adjourn the primary meeting and we are in a regular council meeting? And the first item of business is to adopt the regular meeting agenda for October the 22nd. Motion, Councilor Doherty, Councilor Kendall, all those in favor? And we have two sets of minutes, October the 9th, special meeting minutes, motion to adopt. Councilor Smith, Councilor Krog, all those in favor? And October 9th, regular meeting minutes, motion to adopt. Councilor Worschagin, Councilor Kendall, all those in favor? We have no delegations. We have an opportunity for members of council to make their personal reports and their questions, starting with Councilor Smith?
Sure. Thank you, Your Worship. On the, on the 9th of this month, I attended the regular Phoenix Foundation meeting. We talked about the upcoming social for the 8th of November, so plans are well in place and we're just getting out that that is going to indeed happen. Just confirming that here.
Yes.
The 8th, yes, at 6:30 at the art gallery. On the 11th, along with Sarah Winton as the Chamber of Commerce go-to person, we met with several members of downtown businesses to talk about issues that have been plaguing the downtown in their opinion and to sort of garner some ideas of what they feel can be done to liven things up a bit. So we're going to have another meeting on Wednesday morning to go over that, to see what next steps we can make and whether or not they want to look at forming a Business Improvement Association or just a more informal merchants association. And start drafting up sort of a wish list on what they would like to see as far as what they can do or how the city might be able to support. So I'll be at that meeting on Wednesday. On the 15th, I was, along with Councilor Wires and yourself, we attended the breakfast meeting with Minister Yamamoto or the M-O-Mega. And that was a great conversation that we had, talking about, you know, but what issues rural communities are having and how we might look forward in making things better for us. On the 16th, we had a deer committee meeting. It's yourself, of course. It was small, but it was engaging.
Times in the air.
Yeah, and I'm looking forward to the bigger group getting together to discuss, you know, again, the potential involvement of the Aboriginal group in discussions and how to, to manage our deer population problem. Then on the 19th, along with Councilor Wires and our financial officer, Roxanne, was in Cranbrook for the taxation seminar called For Richer or Poorer, which was to talk about our current model of taxation, sort of the problems municipal, local governments are faced with in trying to pay for their infrastructure. I went in there thinking it was going to be one thing and was really pleased that the hard work that Councilor Wires as a member of the executive and the AKBLG, how they put it together, it was a real workshop. And at the end of the day, we came up with a resolution that we're going to take forward, or the AKBLG is going to take forward. And I'll leave further discussion that to Councilor Wires. And that is it.
Thank you very much.
Oh, there we go. You just got to press it three times. So I had the privilege of participating in the community literacy fundraiser along with a couple of other councilors, I think Council Kendall and Wires and Doherty, I'm not sure. Okay. And we raised, I think a fair amount of money, I think it was over $700 in conjunction with the water brooms and other volunteers and in partnership, I guess, with the exec. So that was really good. We got out a lot of schedules about the community literacy programs, that particular thing. On the 16th of October, I attended the director's meeting for Gallery 2. And I know that they sent the semi-annual report to the city and was wondering if anybody had any questions on that. Just a couple of highlights of that was from April to the end of September, they logged in 12,200 visitors to the gallery, which is up, I think they had 1,100 last year during the same time period. So it's up quite a bit. And the visitor's information had a little over 7,300 visits. So I thought that was pretty good. So if there's any questions on their report or their financial report?
So that is under the information section too. We're going to be asked to accept it and refer it to the budget process. So there's another chance there, council, to ask questions on that?
And that's it.
That's it? Thank you very much. Councilor Kendall?
Thank you, Your Worship. On October 10th, I also, along with Council Krog and several other councilors, took part in the community literacy campaign, which was very successful. On October the 17th, I attended the Small Scale Food Process Association workshop. It was very interesting. There's many new ideas with small scale food processing, marketing techniques, new and improved marketing techniques over the internet with smart devices. And it was very well attended by many local producers, so it was really great to see. We're continuing to pursue the branding initiative. There's a press release that will be out in this week's paper. There'll be posters around town which will give people the opportunity to pick up survey sheets to, and we value everyone's input. We encourage everyone to get involved, put your ideas forward, fill up the survey sheets. They're available online at the CIBC at the credit union and at City Hall. And they shall be returned to City Hall, the paper ones. So again, we encourage everyone to get involved because it's, I believe, a worthwhile endeavor for the entire city.
Thank you very much. Councilor Wires?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll start mine, report this evening with the Reacher Reader Campaign that we all participated on on October the 10th. And Asha Ldoby, the coordinator for the Columbia Alliance for Literacy, advised that this is one arm of the ECT that we can access. And the funds that were raised that day were $708 for the community. So, well done. On October the 12th, I attended the Kettle River Watershed Management Plan Public Session in Rock Creek along with Councilors Smith and Your Worship, organized by the regional district's arm of Area Sea Director Grace McGregor and Area E-Director Gilbert and the project coordinator, Jan Wat. Now, our MLA, John Slater, made a brief appearance to give the attendees an update on the D.C. Water Modernization Act. Does everybody remember the D.C. Water Modernization Act of 2010?
Yes, we, our MLA was actually chairing that, maybe?
Was, yes. So we haven't heard since then what had happened with this. He did give us an update. MOE is currently doing the draft legislation on the act. He spoke to the MOE minister last month. And John's position is now, you will be present for this draft based on province-wide input through the process that was initiated in 2010. So there was a lot, there was an opportunity through the blog on the provincial government's website for communities to submit their ideas and concerns. This will go to the stakeholders, First Nations, local governments, et cetera, to see how it will affect them, the draft that is developed. This includes legislation for groundwater that doesn't exist today. A major gap was the limited riparian protection and issues. This issue was brought to the surface through the public process and will appear in the new draft. On October the 15th, I attended the Boundary Country Regional Chamber of Commerce Breakfast with the Minister of State for Small Business, Honorable Naomi Yamamoto. And interesting to note that some recommendations came from the members who did attend that will caught, actually quite intrigued the minister. And we look forward to hearing back her response. So that will come back through the Regional Chamber of Commerce. Back to, I just wanted to report just also, I just had a notation here. The afternoon session that we did have at the Rock Creek Kettle River Watershed Management Plan covered surface water, groundwater, water quality and aquatic lake. So the session was well attended and the guest speakers provided excellent insight into the work that's being done in the Okanagan Valley for watershed management. On October the 17th, I attended the regular monthly board meeting for the Grand Forks District Library. Two more school tours had come through the library. As you note, the libraries are no longer available in the schools, they've been taken out. So they have received requests from school teachers to bring their students to the library to see, to see how their students can access the resources. Because they're quite, they've made their students fully aware that the internet can't be totally relied upon for information. So there's long way, all the students are getting, have received new library membership cards. The Christina Lake Outreach has reached its first year. And the stats for the Christina Lake visitors year to date was 890. They have, they're out there every Wednesday. They have a staff member from the library who has a library station open from 10 to 4. October library book sale is coming up, October 25th, 26th and 27th. And there is an excellent inventory of books that will be available at the library by donation. Circulations so far year to date for the library has been 71,756. And this circulation includes loans, which is taking out the books, renewals and impounds. The draft 2013 budget was submitted to, which will be submitted to the funding stakeholders because it was approved. And the October, the provincial government collects stats that are published online annually and base their funding to provincial libraries on the stat collection process. So there are stat figures available. I do have them in print if anybody is interested and I'm sure they show up in our weekly information package from the library director. October the 19th, I traveled to Cranbrook for the AKBLG session for richer or poorer, building the case for taxation tools. And as Councilor Smith alluded, we, it was a very interesting session. The provincial election is looming in the spring of 2013. Timing is critical to rally local governments' appetite around the province to establish a campaign strategy to achieve a fairer and long-term funding formula that recognized the true cost of jointly delivering services with the feds and the province for infrastructure and programs. I think it's important to note that there's been no change in the transfer payments that come down to, to the local governments through the taxation system. We see the federal government has, takes 50% of the pie. Provincial government takes 42% and we have 8%. But as we all know, we're all seeing considerable downloading to local governments. I can give you a perfect example in our community. Why is Grand Forks putting $35,000 in their budget to manage deer or have a deer committee when the provincial government is responsible for wildlife? It's, it's time that we join forces in this province. And I think it was critical to note that they spoke highly of the mayor's caucus that you attended, Your Worship, in... you attended, Your Worship, in May of this year. And full support went behind the recommendations that came from your three-day meeting as well. So a press release was released to the media today, and it's entitled, "Cootenay and Boundary Local Governments Think It's Broken." I strongly recommend that you read the press release. It has gone to all media. I have been advised that in the past, the media have not been that responsive to AKBLG press releases or information from AKBLG. So I'm certain that they'll want to have a look at this because we have to start looking and realizing that we need more money to run our local governments. And it isn't fairly coming down the pipeline, just as you recognized with the Mayor's Caucus. I do want to... They endorsed the following statement at the meeting on Friday. "The Association of Cootenay and Boundary Local Governments recommends replacement of ad hoc grant funding." The grants that pitch communities once against the other, where there's winners and there's losers. Where how much does it cost to put together the... Just writing the application and the... Especially with structural, you have engineering and technical information that has to be compiled. It's a great deal of work, and it's a great deal of expense for a local government. And you don't know if you're going to win. So the statement that we have put together, "This means your local government will maintain its infrastructure and continue to deliver needed services on a daily basis. Sufficient predictable funding will ensure each local government can fund their different needs. And all elected officials will be able to plan and budget according to established needs and priorities through collaboration with other government agencies and levels of government." It's time that we realize that pitching ourselves against each other for grants is an old, old outdated method, and we need a fair distribution of funds for the future. And that's my report for this evening.
Thank you, Counsel. I would certainly like to echo some of what Counselor Wires said about the Mayor's Caucus. And we looked specifically at a couple of grants where the cost was 50/50, shared with the province. But in fact, the municipality ended up picking up 70% because of mounting the project, all of the expenses related to it. So it is an archaic system. They ask us to plan five years ahead, but they don't plan six months ahead, and that's the frustrating part of it.
And another point was, they... With these grants, you'll notice, most of the time, you're taking something that isn't a priority in your budget of the five-year plan. Could be an upgrade to a soccer field. That is a low priority. But all of a sudden now gets pushed to the top, and your infrastructure that you need to work on gets moved down again.
Yeah, it's not the kind of meeting I expected it to be either. I thought it was going to be totally different than that. So I'd certainly like to hear more about what was discussed. It sounds like it was highly politicized.
You know, we'll be hearing a lot more.
Yes. Okay. That's it?
Yes.
Counselor O'Doherty.
Yes, Your Worship, like I said, long before, I have the best job on this city council, Your Worship.
Ah.
The parks and the canting yard are closed till the spring. No edicts.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Did we break even this year?
Well, I didn't take that yet. And work on Donison Park in the field is done right now.
I see that.
And they're doing a great job. And thanks to Al and the staff. And the hockey season is on its way now. And my... Border Boon, the minor hockey, bigger skating, and curling, all... They're all open now for the public, full swing. Except for our hockey team, where we're having a rough time right now.
Oh, yeah. You got a new compressor, so the ice will be great.
And a new machine to do the ice.
A new Zamboni?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
So everything looks pretty good now.
Excellent.
So... And I was with those other councilors raising money, and they were waiting for their border boons and the other committee there. And that's my report, Your Worship.
Thank you very much. Counselor Roshig.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple things here. The first one, I'm hoping that one of those individuals that attended the workshop could answer. I heard some time ago, and I don't know if it's true, and hopefully you can check some light. I was told that eight cents of every tax dollar collected in this country is returned to municipalities, only eight cents. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's remarkable.
And not only that, it's fixed on property taxes. But that's our only mechanism for getting revenue for the city, and that is in no way tied to the economy. So that disconnect makes it very hard for local governments to deal with their budgets.
That's interesting. The second thing I wanted to mention, I ran into Ray Hanson from Habitat for Humanity this afternoon, and he asked if I would be interested in being a liaison between city council and Habitat. And I said to him that I would have interest, but I should run by this council. So I would ask you, Mr. Mayor, if I would be...
I would be pleased to see your involvement there with Habitat. And the previous connection there was Chris Moslin. But yes, if you'd like to take that on, I'd like to endorse that.
Okay. Well, thank you. Secondly, I would... As apparently we don't have a policy to deal with it, during the UBCM, those who attended, we received a course pamphlet for Dalhousie University to do with municipal courses. I sent each of you an email, so without going into it all deeply here, I would ask permission from council, being that it's a course, not a seminar, not a conference, which our policy allows that staff act on, to allow me to attend or to take two courses in the spring.
So you're making that as a motion?
I am making that as my request.
If council approved that, what would the cost have happened?
Give me a second here. I have it all in the email I sent here. The cost would be $1,690.
And it's an Internet course, so there isn't travel and accommodation involved?
No travel, no accommodation. It's all open. And the two courses, for the record, are municipal law, I can't speak today, and community and citizen engagement.
Good, Counsel. Even though we've discussed redrafting some of these rules and tightening them up, Counselor Roshig has asked that you consider, at this point, allowing him to attend this course in the spring of this coming year, so we would be budgeting for it. Need a second here for that?
Oh, a second here for this, Coach.
Counselor Smith.
Yeah.
And is Roshig speaking to it?
Yes. And the reason I'm asking now, as opposed to waiting until budget time to speak to it, is the fact that, as we can see on that sheet that was given to us at UBCM, that it did close on 20th of August, and essentially, I'm kind of playing with fire. I have called them as recently as the past five to make sure there was still room. And there is room. There are two squads left, and I used to want to make a call on that. So I spoke to our CD over the phone, and he said there will be funds available to be able to cover the expense of that.
Well, in fact, we would make that decision to make funds available.
Oh, yeah, well, yes, yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yeah. I'm just wondering, is there a vice point that you're aware of more than one that, say, two or four people know that history has been...
It would be the same twice. Even though I would welcome, by final meet, I would welcome anybody else who would be interested in it.
Well, I certainly expressed interest, Your Worship, on my attending that.
Yes, you did.
Yeah.
Okay. Did you... Counselor Kendall.
I certainly don't have any issue with anyone taking courses and approving their knowledge base in any way. If I have a concern is that until we actually have a policy in place for this type of thing, that we would, in effect, be setting a precedent by approving something of his meaning. And that would be... Once the precedent's been set, it would be difficult to go back and change a policy after that. Or at least, that's my concern. I take care of other councilors members that are...
Okay, before I get to Counselor Smith again, any comments from other councilors? Counselor Croft, Counselor Wires, Counselor Dopey, Counselor Croft?
It's an Internet course, but the location of Dalhousie University is in Halifax. And my question, obviously, the interaction with the community course, I think is, would be an awesome asset. I just wasn't sure about that municipal law course because it's Halifax. I thought it was Ottawa, but it's Halifax, and we're in British Columbia, and our municipal laws are unique to us. So what benefit there would be from that?
So are you suggesting that you would support the one course, but not the law?
I would, I guess, need more information on the law course. I would definitely support the one course. And again, concerns that Counselor Kendall raised, a little precedent.
Counselor Roshig, and are you interested in modifying your request to the one course?
No. In regards to Counselor Kendall's concerns there, you understand, but like I said, with the time crunch, the way they're... Because I asked them, in regards to... They offer courses every four months, is what they do. But they don't offer the same courses during that same period every year. So this spring, they're not going to be offering the same course they offer the next spring. They go every second year. So the next time these two courses will be offered will be two years from now. So it's not like I can put it off of January, thinking they're taking the fall of next year or the spring. It's going to be two years beyond that. Secondly, in terms of Counselor Croft's concerns, from what I understand is the course itself is standardized. I've looked at these courses through Canvas and College, as well as Capital College. However, there are six V courses, and they're all in-house, and it's the same material that's used.
Okay.
So I'm not 100% sure how they do it, but it's standardized across Canada, of course. This is just what happens to be the cheapest method that they deliver it by.
Counselor Smith.
Oh, just to address Counselor Kendall's concern with precedent. If, in fact, we are looking to draft a policy that basically speaks the same language that we're talking here, that, you know, supporting people going to courses, then there's not really a precedent if the following policy will be basically allowing that to happen.
Yeah, you're saying it would allow this kind of situation so council could make an exception or make a distinction?
Right, if we're moving...
Based on the availability of funds. Counselor Roshig.
I just to follow that up, just in regards to precedent setting, I would just like to say that regardless of whether or not we allow courses, the next policy that comes through council, there will always be that ability for exceptions. Even if we say course is not allowed, it will not preclude somebody from this council in the future to come and ask, regardless of what the policy says, right? No different than, right now, we have a policy that says nothing about courses, but we still have the ability to come forward and, as I've done, and ask.
Okay, further comments? Seeing none. So the question is on the floor on positive. Do you support Counselor Roshig in taking these two courses? All those in favor? Kerry.
Okay, and well, thank you. The third or fourth, whatever the case would be, item I have is, has been brought to my attention, that Greyhound Canada will be reducing once again their service runs through Grand Forks from 10 to 7, not allowing the two runs on the week on the Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And I was under the assumption that the deadline to submit comments was the 17th of October. Apparently, it's the 24th of October. I know the town of Suyia sent a letter of displeasure to them, but they rushed through it, being that the paper was the 17th. And I'd like to make a motion stating our displeasure with reduction in service by Greyhound Canada, to hopefully make it in time for the comment period.
Second, Counselor Smith. You know, we did write a letter previously when there were discussions of the reduction of service, so wouldn't we our first correspondence on this matter to Counselor Roshig and then Counselor Smith?
Yeah, we wrote that letter when they reduced, I believe, in 1410. And it fell on deaf ears then, but I still think it's worth it traded now. A lot of people rely on that for medical appointments, for recreation, for traveling. There's a lot of different reasons, and it affects people's lives, payables, bottom line, but we have to look at the need and ability for people to access service in a town that's remote enough. And I wholeheartedly support us writing a letter to the state.
Counselor Smith.
I'm just wondering if we couldn't quickly communicate with a few other communities to see if they're on board with the same idea, so that they get a flush of letters all along the route.
Counselor Kendall.
I believe I did read some person, and somewhere that stated that the BLG has sent a letter which, I guess, we could voice a city opinion, but I believe that they presented a regional case to Greyhound.
So you're saying maybe it's not necessarily, we're already speaking as a collective in the AKBLG?
Certainly, yes. But I think if the city wanted to send a letter...
Supporting the motion, anyway. Counselor Croft.
Yeah, I think numerous letters may have there, repetitive, so the AKBLG, they will go, goes...
All right.
But if Greenwood, if we contact...
Not around the table.
I would ask that we send a copy to the AKBLG, showing the support.
Yeah. Okay, so a letter basically showing our concern for the reduction in service and copying AKBLG. Counselor Roshig.
And then I would ask, just to follow up on Counselor Croft, for us to contact municipalities. At the time of Tuesday, it was in our paper, but if Greenwood, maybe not. Some of those municipalities don't have councils of any sort, but instead, how do you get somebody within a community to write that letter to show strength in numbers along with us? I think we might have.
Okay. Very good motion. All those in favor? Kerry, Counselor Roshig.
And last, the last reason, I would like to, you know, retire, make the last meeting, and we'll show the best we can do.
Excellent. And a couple of items, usually I have just the leftovers. I was really pleased to see in the water study meeting in Rock Creek, that we had a number of U.S. representatives from the American side of the border who are equally concerned with the same issues that we are. So this is really drawing in our American cousins to the South, and a very positive development in their participation. I'm combining my report here with the regional report, so I'll ask your approval of it in one motion. The air transfer to the trail hospital helicopter pad requires a helicopter with two motors. Keeping it in mind that because of the population density in the trail area, that single-engine helicopters are not flying into that airport. So I'm watching what impact that would have on us in our helicopter landing pad. The Greenbans, we beat those up. Are any of ours in there?
Not in there.
Yeah. BEDC, the Boundary Economic Development Group, have basically decided that they will continue on, even as Area C, Christina Lake, is removed for reasons of Christina Lake and their services, that we will be continuing on. And we had a successful meeting with representatives of council. Basically, we're not looking for a motion on this matter. It was a question of whether or not our Boundary Economic Development Group would be working in sync with the Economic Development Commission. And I think we have that commitment from both groups for this coming year. So it's just a one-year commitment that we're looking at again, with a thought to evolving as the future changes within the Boundary. And the Deer Committee, I have two items on the Deer Committee that need follow-up on. The East Cootenays are doing a Living with Deer workshop, and I'm thinking that we will probably bring that in as a resource to Grand Forks. The other thing is, the Grand Forks Deer Committee has asked me to write a letter formally to Area D and ask the participation of Area D in the Deer Committee in a formal way, to sit at the table. And the rationale for that is clear, I think. The impact around the region in farming areas and various other areas surrounding the city are as dramatic as some of the things that are happening in town here with deer. And so I'm not sure on the protocol for that, but I'm thinking that that letter should come from Grand Forks City, since it's our Deer Committee. And so not just a letter from the Deer Committee, but a letter from this Grand Forks City Council. And so could I ask that as a motion? Counselor Roshig, second. Counselor Smith. So this would go on letterhead, and we'll word it in a way that is basically encouraging Area D to recognize that responsibility on being part of the committee. We already have Area D representatives who live in Area D, but we have not had an official relationship with Area D on this committee, which we definitely need to share. So all those in favor? So all those in favor? All of Karen. And that pretty much wraps it up, so I would make a motion to accept my report and all the council reports, including the regional district, Counselor Doherty, Counselor Smith, all those in favor? Thank you. Yes, Counselor Roshigan?
Just a question, in further discuss the deer situation, I was reading on the Boundary Signal here, in regards to the deer committee and the Boundary All Nations Aboriginal Council, I've heard nothing of this. Could you go further to detail of what exactly this whole arrangement is? Is it piedosai, is it real, is it, what exactly, I've heard nothing I can ask as citizens?
Yes.
But I can't answer any questions.
Well, there was a suggestion made by the committee that we contact the Osuus Indian Band to see whether there was some interest from Chief Louis and the Indian Band in Osuus in working with Okanagan and Boundary communities, and that would include Pentic and Osuus, various communities are having difficulties. That discussion only happened in a very peripheral way, and in the meantime, the word got out here that we would be interested in working with native groups, and so this native group came forward, Bannick, and basically said, would you be interested in us pitching you on some ideas for how we might work with you and deal with the problem? So that was as far as we got on it at this point, we're waiting for a formal letter from them and a proposal from them that we would then be able to review first at the deer committee, and then you can be sure it will be moving forward in terms of this council. The concept of involving the natives had two rationales to it, one, that they may have more ability to deal with the disposition of the meat, that they might be able to make better use of the whole animal and respect for the whole animal, the hooks, the hides, all of that material from the deer, and secondly, that there would be greater community acceptance for a native group doing a harvest than for the rest of us who are not native. So on those two points, we've invited them to present something to the next meeting of the deer committee. Counselor Smith?
And Bannick stands for Boundary All Nations Aboriginal Council.
Thank you, I'd forgotten, an acronym. So that.
Yes, absolutely.
I think it's a positive move coming forward, but very preliminary stages. Okay, we have recommendations from staff. The first item is the Boundary Hospital Helport, and we were just advising Transport Canada the support for the Boundary Hospital at this point, it's a formalized question to us of support, it's not details of our relationship with or anything, but just the general support. Can I have a motion to make such a letter, Transport Canada? Counselor Wires, Counselor Smith? Discussion?
Counselor? Could the helport affect the other area ambulance services, or is it just be another level of service, or would it be discontinuing?
No, the fixed wing is still going to be necessary, the ambulance service is so limited by a number of factors, by weather conditions, time of day, they don't like to fly at night, there's a number of things that will limit the ability of the helicopter to meet a patient's needs, so no, we wouldn't compliment it further. So the motion's on the table. All those in favor? Opposed, carried? And the next item, I'm going to ask Council to allow us to have the developer in this situation, this is a development permit from Brown Ridge Ventures, they are here this evening, and I would invite them to comment and to answer questions if Council is okay. Pardon, you have a motion first? I do, to break the rules, we ask Counselor Doherty, Counselor Smith, that we allow participation of Brown Ridge Ventures in this discussion this evening. So, yes, go ahead, if you'd like to make an opening comment.
Thank you.
This is for allowing him to speak?
Yeah.
Yes, we do. All those in favor? Thank you, sorry, I'm moving too late here.
Thank you very much, and Counselors for giving us the opportunity. This is a project that, you know, we bought, you know, with the hotel in July before, and after, you know, kind of good assessment of the building, the building is, it's very old, very rundown, and it's been, it's well beyond repair, really, you know, to spend that time and the energy and money necessary to put that thing back to where it should be, it would be well beyond the means of most human beings, so we made a decision to, you know, these old buildings, if you look up and down and all over, these old hotels were built in and around the same period, most of them are all outgoing now, they've all, all got their timing, you can close, you know, the House of Art, the Murphy Hotel has closed down, the Beaver Delight are down, and they're all over, and this one is in that same kind of, that same kind of arena, so for us, it's the one part of the business that is valuable in that, to us, is the retail part of the business, so our goal is to build a retail store and, you know, and just, you know, and not utilize licenses at this time for the pub, or the restaurant, or the rooms, you just don't think that there's a necessity, your honor, your worship, and we can be for that, you know, so people, you know, we've heard talk about, you know, the Agee Hotel, and some of the, you know, some of the, you know, I guess, the emotional attachment to the hotel, you know, we could clearly understand that, but it's just, let's say, it's just, it's just uneconomically feasible for us to try and, you know, do anything with that hotel at this point.
So, Counsel, you understand that what we're looking at here is that we still retain control over the building site, materials, color, landscaping, design, and the articulation of the east wall, so those are items that are continuing to be outstanding for us and allow us to work with the developer here, although this recommendation from staff tonight is that we approve the building development permit and allow for, I'm assuming, the demolition of the building.
Yes.
Counselor Doherty? You're making the motion?
Yes.
And the secondary, Counselor Smith? So it's on the table, further discussion? No questions for the developer?
Mr. Mayor, I'm just reading that the developer was requested to provide some further information to Council tonight, so the items that were to be dealt with tonight were going to be the landscaping, the more, the articulation of the east wall, and they provided us some materials that were not part of the council agenda, that were going to be provided as part of this information. If we move through the report, I think there's a, move along one more slide, please. Okay, so on the picture there, on the, so the one question here was the articulation of the east wall, this is the east wall, the SCP suggests that we don't have any blank campuses, again, here is the east wall right here, the developer's proposed, rather than just a blanket campus area, he proposed these battens to break up that wall. The landscape pieces are identified here as presented, and along here, the form and character of the building and the setback, the character of the building is related to the finishes and the overall facades, and then setbacks is the one question, the administrative transportation setback requirement is a minimum of 15 feet, the developer's proposing a 26-foot setback, that we utilize a lot a little bit more, but what we, what our SCP suggests is to try to maintain that intimate feel with the highway, but we're really talking about feet, we're not talking about a large concession here, so for Council, consider those elements, we're talking about 11 feet, we're talking about the finishes, and this piece here, those are the pieces that weren't identified along the landscaping, so, Mr. Mayor, those are the pieces that the developer has provided as part of the report.
Great, thank you. I think it captures a certain Western look, and what we're looking at is to satisfy the sustainability plan, where we're asking that buildings add to the overall look of a particular street, and I think that they've achieved a certain amount of this in this particular design. Counselor Smith?
Just a little further in, that, there you go, that facade was one that we had talked about with a couple of counselors, were the little windows there really added to that kind of Western feel? The previous slide, the front design did not include those windows, so I'm just wanting to make sure that we're talking about the same thing, you know.
Okay, yes, the motion is on the floor, you ready for the question? All those in favor? Opposed? I'm sorry, was that in favor or opposed? Can we do this vote again for?
Mr. Mayor, if I could provide a little bit more, I think what we need to do is, we need to select these pieces and the developers here to, I think, basically accept this process, but if we go back to the previous slide, if Council's in favor of this overall concept here with the finishes, the form and character with the slanting wall, with that, with those finishes on there, and the overall landscape plan, which would be registered on title as part of the, as part of the DP, you know, if Council's in favor of that book, we're kind of want to maybe go with a rock finish versus the other picture having a brick finish, and the color, I mean, these are the pieces that we would like to have Council speak on tonight, the developer would then just develop a permit, those, with those, for resolution.
Would that include the, whether the windows are included or not included, I'm not sure how far it goes.
Sure, I think the pieces to that, I mean, I can't speak for the developer, but I think they know if they admire amendment, if Council like this option being A1, then that could be, as amendment to that, would be to include windows, I don't know if the developer would have the option to that, so that was something that Council could, make that request.
I think, you know, just if I can speak, your worship, is, you know, our goal is to have something that we're proud of, and also the community is proud of, and if you have those windows, those windows do enhance the look of the building, you know, how do we go, enhance the look of the building, and even on the east wall, you're breaking up that east wall as opposed to one big blank, you know, kind of monotonous scene, that gives us a optical, you know, appearance, that's very pleasing.
It gives a kind of a post of being.
Yeah. Counselor Wires?
I do like the river rock.
Yes.
As opposed to a brick.
We have tried to, we put some brick, we put some options up there, but it came back that river rock was the most appealing, and in here, you know, river rock with the, you know, with the river right behind, it kind of fits in.
That would be for that too, your worship.
Counselor Roshigan?
Yeah, just a question for proof here, at some point you're going to be taking on this building, I'm not too sure if you put that date in here, but if proved, what's your, in your timeframe look like, what's your next step?
Well, we would like to get, you know, proceed as quick as we can, you know, we've, we made the purchase, tried it for it, so, you know, our goal is to get building, you know, get a new building up as quick as we can, so that we're in full operation and both feet firmly planted on the ground when next spring comes around.
Here's my ask, just further, is, I'm from Grand Forks, I lived here all my life, I only went off to go to school, anyhow, you know, I can say I've been to that bar a few times in my other years, but I've never been to the upstairs, and being that it is a way to hold a building, is there any possibility, this is me being selfish, in having the building to allow people and at least take a look in it, I've never seen this building.
Absolutely, absolutely, we can make those arrangements for you, it has, we allow people to come in and, you know, a lot of the material in there, like the, you know, the equipment and the kitchen and that, you know, we've had, asked somebody to come in and take it out, and they gave it to auctions so that they could, you know.
So you're attempting to recycle as much as possible?
Yes, we are, yes, we are. Our goal was to get as many people, you know, and the two choices we had were, you know, just to put it all in a big, you know, in the dumpster, take it in the dump, or to, you know, to make as much use of the materials we could, everything in there, all the kitchen equipment, everything like that.
Counselor Smith?
I think you had mentioned the possibility of salvaging some of the, you know, maybe wood flooring or something like that, or some, some of the actual artifacts that may be there in display or options.
We did, we went through tonight, and we went through with a contractor tonight to do an evaluation and to see if we can, you know, if there is, you know, an opportunity, and I mean, if we can, and if it's feasible, and it makes sense, we most certainly will.
Yes, it's got to make economic sense. Counselor Wires?
Well, Mr. Irvin, thank you for coming this evening, and if you should find anything interesting, the demolition crew, we'd be really excited to see what that is, to maybe pass it on to our artifacts at the Boundary Museum Society, or, just so you know, we do have the archival system here at City Hall, and the Boundary Museum Society, our community as well.
Well, we do, your worship, we do have one more picture in there, probably one of the original pictures, where there's some, I guess the train station was right next door, and there's the picture of some of the, I guess, the welcoming party and the balconies on the train schedule, so we do have that, and we've, you know, that's something that we can make copies of, you know, and furnish those to certain, you know, to our weekends.
Okay, and thank you for allowing our staff to help shape this so that it does meet the sustainability requirements. Counsel, you have a motion in front of you to approve the development permit? All those in favor? Vote, carry. Thank you.
Thank you, worship, I'd just like to thank the staff and the council members, and especially for being so cooperative by helping us to put this together.
That's us, we're cooperative.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Okay. And we are. Counsel, can I have a motion to accept our decisions as recommended? So, Counselor Doherty, Counselor Croft, all those, no, don't vote yet, take your hand. Okay, first item is the Gallery Two Semiannual Report in accordance with their lease-in funding agreement. As you can see, they are asking us to consider in the budget process the return to the funding level of $150,000, this will be referred to the budgeting process. Counselor Roshigan asked if there were other questions related to this tonight, and do you have the report from them, if anybody wants to bring any of the items forward for discussion at all? If not, we should report, you know, when you read it or not.
I have to.
It was him.
Oh, it was Counselor Croft, yeah, oh, I'm sorry. Neil, that, okay, yes, Counselor Croft, I'm sorry, did you want to highlight any further items?
No, just if anybody had any questions. The, I mean, it may not be a one, it's a.
Counselor Kendall? What's the funding amount currently, they're asking you to return it to the original agreement?
Thirty, thirty.
Okay, second item B is correspondence from the RCMP expressing thanks to the Grand Forks City for the participation in the crisis, the crisis at the credit union in terms of the potential bomb scare, and so they were really pleased at how quickly the city staff came forward with support for that, that was the incident. Correspondence from Nadine Nabachinov suggesting that we drill more wells and being opposed to water meters. and being opposed to water meters, receipt for information. Hello pledge, very interesting. Counselor Wires have anything to say on this? It sounds like a really interesting community pledge to say hello to people and just make it a friendlier town. So, I'm saying we should buy into that.
Hello.
Good start. The travel guide book, counsel to receive this information. It looks very promising, but again, you know, a full page is four grand or so, and we've committed ourselves to the Kettle Valley Express and the visitor's choice right now. And so, I'm assuming at this point that we wouldn't pursue a further package at this point until next pledge. Oh, okay. And... We have minutes from the Environment Committee, minutes from the Deer Committee, and the October 9th task list. Any further questions? All those in favor? Both carry. So, that brings us to... Questions from the media and public. Carl, you're the only, well?
Roy?
Better be good.
That's okay. We're gonna, we're gonna screw them up. There you go. So, just to inform you, what I just did with Counselor Shagan here was showing the live stream. You guys have been live for over an hour now.
Wow. Did you see it up here?
No, I didn't see it up there.
No.
Somebody has to be up on that.
How did you do that?
You can see it here on my camera.
Yeah, so he's participating. Actually, Google makes available, they're trying to, if you're Facebook, this thing called Hangouts, and you can stream video live to the Hangout. You can have other people participate. So, on the stream that he's looking at there, there's two little windows. Well, one is the camera out there, and the other one is his webcam over here, because he's been in as well the whole meeting long. And somewhere along the way, I said, well, I can invent this on a page. So, you had one viewer the whole time that asked, "Rain," she's probably, well, she's probably... There are some technical issues, but yeah.
So, this is an exciting development, that we might be able to go live to our community again here? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, probably. As long as they have web access.
Yeah, so the community would have to be on an internet connection.
Just thought I'd let you know that.
Okay, it'd be interesting to know how many people are online, what would our audience be? But I certainly welcome that. I think that we all behave better when we're on camera.
And it becomes a YouTube video afterwards, so you can get metrics of how you're live, live, and you're watching.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll try to get Gary my Gmail app.
Oh, it's just true. What's up?
Yeah, just go to the government's menu, either go down the page a little bit, in the play on the little box.
Okay. All right, thank you, Liz. Counselor Smith?
I suggested that last, also talk to our CEO, who then can connect him with our IT to work out if there's any other issues that have to be considered.
I wonder if there's any monetary cost in this one?
No, actually, Google makes almost available for free. And if the city had its own Gmail account and YouTube account, you indeed could be the host of this thing, and all of you guys here could be participants. And it would be just like a, a go-to-meeting type thing, where you have multiple people being involved, and when they start talking, their key webcam becomes a major feature.
Yeah. Gotcha.
I guess the only person that would be having a problem would be Counselor Doherty.
Yeah, it's gonna be development.
Okay, thank you very much.
It's gonna be development.
Anything further? Mr. Ronigan?
I just wondered if it would have to be, trying to get for CEO, or you would have to be a resident of the council for this to be regular, televised.
Gee, I don't know whether we ever did it when we stopped or not. We could check that out as he explores that with less, to see whether we need a motion to do that or not. Interesting question. Mr. Ronigan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My first question is about dust control.
Yes.
I'm asking it because I promised someone who's fought me on the street, who drives into the city every morning, was questioning dust control and Pacific abrasives. Now, I understand that eight or four of the rocks will have to control and equipment to control the dust in their yards. What about Pacific abrasives?
At their plant? Yeah, I, we did meet recently with Pacific abrasives, and I don't believe that dust was discussed as an issue. We, I don't recall any complaints about dust. Have we experienced complaints about dust from Roxol's site at the tip?
No, Pacific abrasive.
Oh, what did I say? Roxol, yeah. Pacific abrasives, sorry. Getting early.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have that information before me, but it's not something that I've been aware of since I've been here with any dust control.
I mean, there has been a chronic dust problem on Riverside Drive for many, many years, but that appears to me to be from the pile, not from the activities of mining. Counselor Smith?
I think, and I just drove by the plant itself, where they actually do the grinding and separating and all that.
You mean the one on Carson?
On Carson, and that's really where all the dust is coming from. And there doesn't appear to be any sort of mitigation equipment or something to do with it.
Well, their mitigation here is they wet it. So, the people who live across the road have had a problem for, since that site was set up there with dust drifting across from that site.
Do you have any jurisdiction for it?
That's regional district, yes. So, Roy, or Mr. Ronigan, what would you like us to do with this matter? Do you think it's worth looking into first?
The person had pictures that had been taken as she came down the road of that situation up there, and said, is there anything that can be done about it? So, I'll leave you with that question.
Okay, and I'm not sure we have a problem there, but maybe that would be the first question I would have, is do we have a problem?
Maybe someone could check and see if there is a problem.
Yes.
And that came out of, the reason that she asked me was because of my column on the Nethomometer?
Yes.
And why didn't they test up in that area? And another question, it is city property, and we're working within the city.
The Roxol pile, yes.
So, I'll leave that with you.
Okay. I think we could ask for us to check that out, and Counselor Kendall and Smith?
A suggestion, Your Worship, may be that, since you're a representative to the R and K E, that the next meeting you could bring that up. And I've driven by that plant myself, and there's plumes of dust coming out of that one they're operating. And I realize that it's not in the city boundary, but possibly you could bring up these concerns to the R and K E.
You're talking about the Carson Road cleaning plant?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, and I'll, we'll broach that with the regional district. Counselor Smith?
Well, certainly, yeah, the Boundary Air Quality Committee, which is now the Environment Committee includes their quality concerns. It does open up the jurisdiction, I guess, on that Environment Committee level, so, you know, maybe there's more discussion that can happen there. But I do recall that the map, the route that was taken, they did go past...
They do Carson Road.
And also Riverside Drive, or Granby, Granby Road there passed the landfill. So, I think data would be collected on a regular basis from both.
Right. Okay, the dust, I think in general, we could take a look at that dust problem and report on it.
We are meeting tomorrow. Thank you. Second question with regard to, going back about a year or so, a library renovation.
Yes.
And it was brought up at a couple of meetings, a couple of meetings ago at the Library Board.
Right.
What is the situation?
We applied for a sustainability grant. Is that a, what was it called? What was that grant called? Anyway, we applied for a grant. Infrastructure grant, yes. And as to, we have, I'm assuming not heard back on it, but that grant went in several months ago now.
I think that was the Canadian Infrastructure Improvement, was it? Or that 15-year?
I think that's it, yeah.
It had to be an existing built.
An existing built.
Can't be anything new.
So, we, we looked at that and decided, I think, on phase one and phase two of the original plan that was put together for the renovation, that we'd put washrooms in, that we'd clean up the basement, put an access to the basement. I don't know how far we got in that. I'd have to go back on the documents. I know that the grant itself couldn't be over a certain dollar figure, and, and so, we had to modify our application, but it did go in as our request from the city.
Okay, thank you. The matter of CETA has been discussed around this table.
Yeah.
And I don't know where that is going, I mean federally, whether it's going to be signed or what. But my question is, does the council get information on federal and provincial deals that affect them? For example, if you read what you can find on the China-Cana investment deal, the commentary on that indicates that it will be somewhat similar to CETA, except it's with regard to investments, and...
So, yes, we do get information from the FCM and from UVCM on those international matters, when it comes to us to read and to keep up on.
Okay, this, this deal with China is just about as scary as CETA, at least from my opinion. Finally, with the Deer Committee, and I haven't read the minutes in the report, has there ever been any discussion about habitat restoration?
Yes, there's been a lot of discussion about restoring the habitat surrounding the city. And one of the problems that we're addressing at the committee is that the habitat enhancement would really be undermined severely by the cows in the grassland surrounding Grand Forks. The various areas that you can see visually from around the city are where the habitat should be enhanced for the whitetail deer, but it's also a favorite range of a lot of cattle. And so, thoughts to, to do that really hinge on our ability to keep cows out of some of those sensitive areas. It's, it's the only way that we can go, is to, to put the deer back where they belong in simple terms.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Further, from the floor?
I just wanted to add my observation that the plume rising from the processing, you know, the slag, Pacific abrasives, I've seen that from highway, off in the distance. Now, the first time I saw it, I thought, what's going on? What is that? What's up there that can put up stuff like that? And it was that, it's pretty evident when you're working.
Well, I can see a plume of, of moisture, and it's evident in the winter months more than the summer because they're washing, and I think it's heated water that they're using to wash it with. So, I don't see that part.
Well, actually, it's like a brown veil that rises up.
Okay, I haven't seen that. I'll defer to the, to the Committee on the Environment. All right, thank you. And, motion to adjourn?